This is City Council, District One. All the candidates were invited. Mr. Acevedo, I do not see. Ms. Boydin is here. Mr. Berry's here. Mr. Wells is here. And Mr. Hampton sent his regrets. He had a family situation that prevented him from being here. So with that, if I could have everybody's attention. Shh. We are trying to get as many questions in as we can. And I'm going to go right here to Brian. What can and will the city do? What can and will the city do under your administration to address the massive sediment and habitat removal program in Hahamunga Park? What would you do as the council member of District One?
First, I'd like to say that I want to thank you for staying. It's been a long evening. You've been sitting there for a long time, so thank you for staying for our part, the very last section. The next comment I'd like to make about the sediment removal is I think that the plan as it's outlined now is not functional. And the reason it's not functional is because it will impact the neighborhood negatively, causing literally hundreds of truck trips on a weekly basis. It will take years for the sediment to be removed. There are, I think, some very creative ideas out there on how to utilize that space in a different way. So thinking about, one of the questions earlier was parkland. So thinking about utilizing park space, the entire area. So some creative ideas would be placing community gardens there, expanding tree planting opportunities, and then other recreational uses for that piece of property. But I don't think that the plan that's been outlined currently is a viable one.
Ms. Boydin?
Thank you. I think this relates to the Hahamunga sediment removal. Having been the chair of Hahamunga for two years, when I sat on that in 2005, 2006, and '07, we did have a plan. We came up with a very comprehensive community plan that was really structured around what the community decided was going to be of most importance. Now, it seems that there has, obviously, there have been changes and needs for changes. Removing the sediment in the process that they're anticipating isn't very effective, as mentioned before by Brian. And I think there's a better way to be a little bit more cost-effective and environmentally friendly around that particular space, inclusive of looking at alternatives which might also expand or, you know, at least think about including some urban education opportunities for our youth in the community with that space. I do agree with Brian related to looking at additional park space for that particular area as well.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Thank you very much. First and foremost, I think it's important to address this as a matter of public. There is a twofold issue here. First and foremost, we need to protect the downstream area for flood protection so we don't have a major flood situation, even though we are in drought conditions over time. That is a potential situation. And to protect the natural habitat down there. I think it's important to realize that the sediment buildup did not occur overnight, and it's not going to be resolved overnight. I think the most strategic approach would be to do a limited removal of the sediment in that particular region. Cap the removal by, in terms of how much will be removed each year. Make sure that there is adequate ingress and egress of the trucks so trucking maneuvers do not impact the neighborhoods. In other words, make sure they are off the interstate and immediately back on the interstate to move this product out of the region. We also need to take into the fact that we're not conducting this activity during holidays, major events, et cetera, so it also imposes on the neighborhoods. But I say we address the problem systematically so that ultimately the inherent hazard is removed.
Thank you. Ms. Boydin? Tonight is the opportunity to state your position on the 710 Tunnel.
So the 710 Tunnel, I mentioned to someone earlier today that when I moved to California in 1985, there was discussion around building the 710 Tunnel. It's 2015, and we're still kind of talking about it. I personally don't, I don't believe that the 710 Tunnel is appropriate for this community. I think the community has spoken about that already. I believe it's a serious disruption, not to just the community in itself, but a displacement of those homes, of residential, of business communities that will not actually yield the outcome that they're anticipating. And it's also, in addition to that, not very fiscally responsible. I think we need to identify alternatives that support really what the intended outcome was initiated to be in the first place, without having the undesirable consequences that are imminent with this tunnel.
Mr. Wells?
I want to be very candid with you here so that the record is clear. I think the tunnel was a bad idea. I think it impacts the safety of residents. I think that it will increase traffic both on the service streets as well as on the interstate. I think it will compromise businesses. And I think that it's an inherent hazard in dealing with anything that might happen in those tunnels, in the spirit of our first responders. As example, if you have a tunnel situation environment and a hazardous material spill from one of the hundreds of trucks that will go through there on a daily basis, you have a fire condition in that tunnel, you are compromising the safeties of the very first responders that are sworn to protect our environment. So it comes with numerous safety considerations, and I think there's an adverse impact on the environment as a whole, and we need to look for other alternatives. I feel that the state has pretty much put our back against the wall as a local government in as much as Governor and the Senate bill that went through that pretty much eliminated a surface street alternative. So we must seek and land on some sort of solution that will alleviate the need for the tunnel.
Mr. Berry?
It's always interesting, I think, to find a place where there's unanimity, and I believe this is one of them. I'm also opposed to the tunnel for the various reasons that were stated. What I find also that hasn't been discussed in the research that I've conducted is that the tunnel will fill up pretty much immediately. All of us drive the freeways every day. One of the candidates earlier mentioned the 210 freeway after 2:00 going eastbound is pretty much a horrible experience. The same situation will occur. You'll have to keep widening and widening and widening, and you can't do that in a tunnel. There are also issues of safety. If there's a breakdown inside the tunnel, what is the escape route? How is that managed? There are also issues of, one of the places where homeless reside quite frequently here in the city is at the intersection of the 710 and the 210. This will be another place for that type of activity. So I think one of the discussion points that we should be having is what are the alternatives? Some of them that were mentioned earlier are expansion of light rail system. I think we should invest heavily, take that $10 million, $6 to $10 million, and invest in light rail. I think we should also be working on bus lanes. I think we, another part of the transportation system is making it bike-friendly. So multimodal systematic approach to solving the transportation problem. One of the other comments that was made earlier is about the venting. The venting would have to come out near places like Huntington Hospital. If you consider truck traffic in a tunnel, that's pretty toxic material. The other step that we need to take, which is related, which isn't the transportation, is actually our air quality. We need to be thinking about, the gross polluters in Southern California are the trucks.
Thank you.
We need to be thinking about trucks.
Thank you. We are going to go, everybody had that one, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Wells, you got the next question. Many communities are struggling with police oversight questions and race relations, especially with respect to police officers' treatment of the African-American community. Do you favor increased police oversight in the city of Pasadena? And if so, what specific changes to the current system would you like to implement? And if you support the current system, please explain why.
First and foremost, I think that we need to take a hard look at the current system that we have in place, specifically holding the police chief accountable for holding the officers on the street accountable. Secondly, the Public Safety Committee of the City Council and their oversight of the police department. I believe that the issue of oversight from a civilian standpoint, whether that be a commission of some sort or an independent auditor, needs to be thoroughly vetted throughout all of Pasadena to let the citizenry weigh in and get further analysis on treatment, et cetera. I also believe that we need to do a better job of allowing the police chief and the Public Safety Committee to do their job by making sure that the community is well-informed on how to report wrongdoing when you are contacted by the police. Furthermore, they need to be educated on how to approach the police in a cooperative fashion. But to sum it up, I am open to the concept of civilian oversight of the police department, but I believe I need more information to make sure that this is properly vetted in the community, and we're considering all concerns.
Mr. Berry?
I think the first thing we have to take into consideration is this is a national issue. So there have been several incidents here in Pasadena of police use of force, Kendrick McDade being the most recent one. But we also have to consider that this has national implications, and it originates in issues of race and issues of power and control. Issues like Ferguson don't occur overnight. This is a historical manifestation of discrimination and policies in the United States that have caused imbalance of power. That is not to say that necessarily our police department has the same issues as some of those other cities. Nevertheless, I am completely for citizen police oversight. I recently had a conversation with the Inspector General of the California State Department of Corrections, CDCR, and he talked about the reason why it is so crucial that citizens are involved and that there is an independent body that is checking the prison system. Likewise, for any body of policing around the state, there should also be an independent body that is overseeing what the police department is doing on a day-to-day basis. I would also add, there are several other components that need to happen. One is that training needs to be changed to a more community-minded perspective. The second one is that officers continue, Chief Sanchez does this, but it needs to be expanded to have more officers come from the community so that they know the people in the community and the issues that they face. And then I would also say that training needs to happen on the part of the public, especially young people, to know what their rights are when they're stopped by law enforcement and know what their responsibilities are as well. So it's a multi-pronged approach that not only includes police oversight, but also community participation.
Thank you. Ms. Boydin?
Well, I'm very encouraged that the Pasadena, recently, the Pasadena Police Department has been very willing to engage the community in a lot of different ways. I don't think that they're not meaningful, but I do think that they sometimes become a part of a cycle of being disingenuous, the community with the police department and vice versa. I do favor community oversight. We've all sat in many meetings where we've all agreed that this was a great meeting and that the police were awesome and they're doing a great job, and walked away still feeling a little disenfranchised. And I think that that's something that really needs to be addressed in the community from a relationship perspective. This is not something that's going to change overnight. This is not something that's easy. In fact, this is really a hard conversation, but it is one that our community must have, quite honestly. I believe that the relationship building has to start, and it has to start in very meaningful ways, and taking a look at doing something a little bit more innovative around how we're going to engage the community, how we're going to engage the police when they don't actually live here. And that kind of ties into affordable housing issues and other things as well. But possibly looking at having, you know, officer night in instead of officer night out, a police night out, so that we are able to become more familiar with our police department members and they with us, so it's not just some perp running down the street.
Thank you. As this is an act forum, I'm going to follow up with a simple, one of our rapid-fire questions, and I'll start with Mr. Berry. Have you read the Act proposal to commission an independent police auditor to increase civilian oversight? Have you read our specific proposal?
No.
Pixie?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
No.
Okay. Moving on to the next question. Well, I'll do one more rapid-fire. Are you an Act member?
No.
Yes.
No.
Okay. We'll come back to those. Pixie, what would your agenda be as a council member to create more affordable housing units or apartments in Pasadena?
I believe that there are very interesting ways that we can start looking at affordable units in the city. Now, what was discussed in the previous panel were some of the things that I think is obviously time for us to take a look at, looking at what our current city policy structure is as it relates to affordable housing, and how we can possibly change and evaluate that particular policy to fit better the needs of the community now and into the future. In addition, I think we should be working a little bit more collaboratively with other organizations to create very competitive application packages to compete for dollars for the federal and state level for programs that we don't necessarily traditionally apply for. I think the applications we do submit are things that we should continue to submit for, but I do think there are some other programs that do, that the city qualifies for that we have not yet taken advantage of. But it does require us to be in collaboration and partner, partnering with other entities, which we may not necessarily have done traditionally in the past.
Mr. Wells?
First and foremost, let me just highlight the fact that the city of Pasadena has an inclusionary housing ordinance that is award-winning ordinance, I might add. One of two cities in the nation that has been acknowledged for their public policy on affordable and workforce housing availability. I think one of the next steps would be to look at depressed properties. Having just retired from the city after 35 years, I'm inherently aware that there are a number of parcels around the city that could perhaps be purchased, rehabbed, and made affordable to the community at large. There happens to be one in District One. Formerly the Washington Apartments, it's been vacant for many years. It has numerous apartment units in it. It was currently under construction, but that's an example of the type of property that is oppressed that we could go in as a city, purchase, and make those units affordable. I think the Affordable Housing Ordinance lends credence to the fact that we are charging fees. It can also be used to help create more affordable housing, which is also a good approach to addressing this issue.
Mr. Berry?
So I think when we talk about affordable housing, we also have to define why it's so important. So we're talking about a 12, the last panel was talking about 12 to $14 wage or salary. That's anywhere from $24,000 to $28,000 a year. That's barely enough to pay for rent in this city. The funding, or the formula for identification of whether you can affordability is 30% of your income. So in order to buy about the median price here in Pasadena, which is about $450,000, you need close to between $80,000 and $90,000 a year to be able to buy a house in Pasadena. So this is an extremely urgent issue because when we're talking about the workforce, there are very few people who make that amount of money. So some of the answers are some of the processes that we can embark upon to create affordable housing. The first one is Bill Wong. He is one of the most dynamic and innovative housing directors in the country, so we need to support him as much as possible. Next, it would be to strengthen the inclusionary housing ordinance in a way that offers us the opportunity to build housing. So inclusionary housing does two things. One, you, as a builder, you have the option to construct or build, or you have an option to pay into a fee. If it's built, it's much more cost-effective. The next one is to expand the reach of the Second Unit Ordinance. The Second Unit Ordinance has 15,000 square feet where you can add another unit to your lot. That needs to be diminished to a reasonable size. There are very few lots in the city of Pasadena that are 15,000 square feet. We also need to improve housing stock. We need to help first-time homebuyers through Neighborhood Housing Services. We need to do creative housing projects.
And in conclusion.
The Pasadena Unified School District, because they have land, and that's what we need. We also need to encourage creative housing. There's affordable living for the aging, which is a mechanism for seniors to be able to share housing.
Thank you. All right. Next person. Was that all three? Yeah, that was all three. Okay. Next question goes to Mr. Wells. Is there a role for the city to play in making sure our youth are in a positive position to thrive and excel? And if yes, what should the city be doing about our youth?
First and foremost, I think the city should take a heightened interest in after-school programs that build and pave the road to assistance with their schoolwork, social involvement, interaction, and youth sports. As a president and founder of a youth sports program, I can tell you that the impact of engaging kids in competitive sports is tremendous. I would like to see the city go one step further and partner and collaborate with community assets to help bridge the gap between what has been left out of our school system, and I am specifically speaking to vocational education. I may be dating myself, but back in junior high and high school, we had the occasion to take shop classes and learn to work with these, to be assets to the community once out of high school, and enter the building trades and other beneficial occupations. But I think that needs to start at a very minimal, the middle school level. But I think the city needs to identify assets around the city that might be able to help bridge that gap and begin to offer some additional training electives for the kids that they can identify their passion, begin to dream, and then ultimately thrive.
Mr. Berry?
So the first part of this question is actually prioritizing youth. So one of the most important things that we can do as adults is to recognize the value of young people and to, when we see a young person on the street, instead of saying, "Oh, what are they up to that's negative?", to say, "What a wonderful young person. I wonder what, how I could help that person," or how, or what's going on in their minds. We need to start a PR campaign, which I think, again, has national reverberations, saying that young people are valuable and that they're important and that they're cared for. I think a lot of young people today do not feel that way. They feel like they don't have a space. They feel like they're shooed away from shopping centers, and they don't, they aren't a focus of our attention. So there are mechanisms by which we can encourage that. One is through mentoring programs. I think there's Pasadena Mentoring Partners, which encompasses a variety of the community-based organizations in the city. We need to be asking the faith community, we need to be asking some of the organizations like ACT, to consider being mentors and to help young people to move forward. The second one is, we need to prioritize the Pasadena Unified School District, to give them the focus and the attention that they need to grow and thrive. Another one is in the arts. There is an art center called Artworks for young people. I think we should be expanding Artworks. I think we should create a mechanism by which Artworks has an exterior place for young people to practice as well as an interior place. I think young people should be supported and assisted. And the last thing that we need to do is create a youth master plan. This city has plans for everything. It has a general plan, it has a transportation plan, it has a Northwest specific plan, it has a South Lake plan, but there's no youth master plan. We need to be organized in a way that delineates the places where young people are important and how we can support them in their growth and development so they can be adults.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Boydin?
So when we start talking about youth, it'd be great to kind of define the age bracket in which we're talking about. I think the city of Pasadena has a number of fair activities for a lot of young people in general. We really do embrace and love our kids. There's tons of stuff for them to do. Having two kids myself in their 20s, I kind of have firsthand knowledge. So when, somewhere around puberty, though, we start shying away from these young adults because they're starting to act differently than we anticipated. Then as they become young adults, we don't have anything for them. The city speaks very clearly about what there is for them here, and there isn't a lot for young adults, young people, teenagers and young adults to do here. And we haven't made that a priority, and we haven't made that a focus. I do personally believe that vocational education and training is a real strong emphasis that needs to happen in partnership with not just PUSD, but with our local educational communities as well. We have Caltech, we have PCC, we have a lot of educational opportunities here that we really need to capitalize on. Being an educator as well, myself, and creating STEM camps for young people, it's very clear that they're just dying for this kind of input, this kind of activity, this kind of outlet. We really do need to spend some time thinking about how we're going to cultivate this population in a way that they feel engaged and wanting to be here and more participative in this process that we're calling community activism.
Thank you. Mr. Berry, you got the next question. A former city employee was recently arrested in connection with the alleged misappropriation of public funds of up to $6.4 million over the past 11 years. What specific things are you going to do to address this issue, and should there be consequences for the current city staff?
The, I think the most important part of this particular issue is that it's damaged public trust. It's been devastating. I'm wanting to get involved in democracy because I believe it works. And I also believe that many people are disenfranchised because of issues like this, whether it's a scandal at a federal level or a local level. All I have to do is say bell, and people roll their eyes. I think this is going to make it extremely difficult for all of us to engage the community. This is a horrible time for this to happen. As far as how we deal with it, as was stated previously, an internal audit is extremely appropriate. What was discussed at last week's City Council meeting was also a realignment of structure, a realignment of supervision. So those absolutely have to take place. As far as culpability, as far as punishment, the individuals who are involved, they need to be punished to the full extent of the law. I think it's a travesty that $6.4 million was taken. As far as staff, that, there is, if you've ever worked in city government or know of any bureaucracies, there is not a supervisory place for the city manager to be watching the entire city of 2,000 employees. I think that the city manager is a huge responsibility. I think that there needs be an analysis, though, of who was responsible for this particular fund and why the checks were cut in the way that they were cut. There should be some sort of disciplinary action to those individuals. That is left up to the internal process of the city.
Thank you. Ms. Boydin?
I think that this is really speaking a lot to company culture deficiencies. As many people may very well know in their own places of employment, you tend to do things because it's always been done that way. And people get into these habits and ruts of how things have always worked in the past. I think even in the audit report, there was a comment about this particular employee being a trusted employee, while yet not having necessarily the authorization to
being a trusted employee while yet not having necessarily the authorization to do the types of things that he obviously did do. So that's really one of the things that have to actually change, really changing the company culture, because this is a business. The municipality is a business, and we do have to function in that way in certain cases. This is one of those cases. I do know that we did reduce, at one point, the auditing staff from the city's perspective, and it's good to see that that is actually coming back in alignment with what is required because it's obvious that there has to be a check and balance. In addition to changing the company culture and putting in auditing staffing to ensure that, you know, these types of things are not possible or not as possible in the future because there are policies and procedures that do exist if people were to follow them. I do think creating different performance measures, though, for department directors and department management who have financial responsibilities should be put in place so that there are different measures that people could and should be held accountable for, not just in 10 or 11 years, but on a quarterly or annually basis.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you. First and foremost, the worst thing you can do, short of not having policies, procedures, and protocols on the books, is to have them and not follow them. And I think that was a big part of the problem with this particular situation. Bear in mind, in the last 11 years, based on my calculations at least, there's been three city managers, at least two public works directors, and two finance directors. And the reality is this, for most general fund departments, some of these obscured funds, all of 131 in the city, to say the least, tend to fall off radar. And I think that if you follow the procedures you have, coupled with the fact that you reassess those policies, procedures, and protocols, and update them to make sure that you are instituting best practices, that you can prevent this from happening in the future. To the second part of your question, in the spirit of accountability, I believe there needs to be accountability from the lowest to the highest level. Let the cards fall where they may. I see that as the only positive outcome to this, to ensure that there's transparency going forward, people are held accountable both criminally and civically, excuse me, and we move forward as a city, as we always do.
Thank you. We are getting close to our time limit, and we were rushed in the beginning, so I'm going to take one of the short questions and make it a 30-second question and then have one final broad question. So this is a 30-second question. Do you think there should be more, fewer events, more or fewer events at the Rose Bowl, and should we have the NFL in the Rose Bowl? Ms. Boyd.
I think that we should probably take a look at minimizing the impact to the community. I think having as many events as we had this past year was clearly an overburden to the community and to the city as a whole, while it may have generated revenue. I don't think of the NFL, first of all, as a business individual, I don't think the NFL is considering or would consider Pasadena under the circumstances with as many people who say no. I say no because I don't think it's practical for the NFL to be in the Rose Bowl specifically.
Thank you. Mr. Wells?
Thank you. First and foremost, I believe the city can do a better job of regulating the type of displacement events that we invite in to our environment. First and foremost, we want to make sure that we don't adversely impact the surrounding neighborhoods, specifically the East and West Royal Residence. I think it's important to take these.
Thank you. 30 seconds. Mr. Berry?
30 seconds to answer that question. So I live near Rosemont and Orange Grove. Three nights of One Direction was a little bit much. And the situation is that many times I would come back, try to get home, and be blockaded out of my house. So I think that there needs to be a strong dialogue with the RBOC and with the city as well. As Pixie pointed out, there are ramifications as far as income, but we need to be thinking a little bit more intelligently about.
Thank you.
The use of the Rose Bowl.
Thank you. This is our final question, and Pixie, you went first. So Calvin gets the final first position, and Ms. Boyd, you go last. What makes you different and why are you the right choice to be the city council member for District One?
I will tell you that I recently wrapped up 35 years as a public servant. I know how to get things done around the city. I have fostered great relationships with the existing policymakers. I was a department head over the last three years during the, one of the most significant economic downturns in modern history. And I think when you take into account that three of the district's council members are running on the polls, these are the same lawmakers that I have been working with through that economic downturn, and I believe that the key to the success of City Hall is to being able to collaborate and work with people. No one council member does anything by him or herself. I think it's important to realize that there are issues in my neighborhood that I'm concerned with, which is why I am running, to deal with these issues head-on, to improve and enhance the quality of life for the citizens of District One.
Mr. Berry?
Three years ago, in Districts Three, Five, and Seven, there was a 13% voter turnout. Four years ago, when there was a mayor election, there was a 19% voter turnout citywide. One of the reasons why I'm running is because I feel as though we can do better. There are so many people who are cut out of the conversation. I believe in citizen participation, I believe in civic engagement, I believe in community organizing. I believe that everyone has a voice, that everyone has a role. I believe that our challenge is to determine what that role is for that individual. Everyone in this room has talents. Everyone in this room has abilities. All of those could be utilized for the betterment of the community. As a leader, as a city councilperson, it would be my role to help with collaboration, with connections, with linkages, with identifying fulcrums for change, fulcrums for agreements, avenues for us to get along and work closer together. I've had over 20 years of experience professionally recently in this community. I've worked for the school district, I've worked for the city, and now I'm in the nonprofit arena. So I have a broad range of experiences and knowledge that I think would contribute to my being an excellent choice for representing the community. I also think that as representatives, we're just that, we represent the people. We listen, we engage, and then we take the ideas that we hear from the grassroots and utilize those to build sound public policy so that our city grows and develops in ways in which my grandfather would be proud of.
Thank you. Ms. Boyd.
I'm running for this particular opportunity because I really do believe in District One is a wonderful, vibrant place to live. I have been active in the Northwest for over 12 years, sat on many city council, I'm sorry, city commissions and advisory boards and groups, in addition to being a part of nonprofit organizations, even president of boards as well. I believe that all of that experience kind of culminates into leadership skills that I feel I can take into the community and help foster a sense of connection where there isn't currently with the community to the city government. There's a huge population of individuals that live in District One who do not feel connected to anything, and a huge, including their neighbors. And this is something I strongly want to change and advocate for difference in. I do believe that this is an optimal time for us to really be looking at how to engage the community in certain ways that we can foster better relationships, to move some of the changes of the policies that we're ultimately going to do forward in a very realistic way. I feel that my leadership skills are those most conducive to bridging those kinds of conversations together. I do it for fun, and I do it all the time.
Thank you very much. Let's give it up for our District One council members. Once again, I want to thank ACT co-chairs Felicia Williams, Linda Centel, myself, Anthony Portantino, and Merrily Marshall, our research committee chair, for putting on this forum. ACT, ACT Steering Committee members are going to stay, and that is a ACT Steering Committee meeting only. It is not a general ACT meeting or a public meeting. It is an ACT Steering Committee meeting. The general meeting will be noticed and publicized at a later date. Thank you all for coming, and you heard a lot from some great candidates tonight. Have a safe trip home.